Terry.
Good morning, everyone. I would like to call the Calbright College Board of Trustees Executive Committee meeting to order this morning on December fourteenth at eleven A M. Before we begin our meeting, I'd like the board liaison to review the meeting procedures and protocols.
Good morning, everyone, and thank you for joining us. I am Terry Lucas, the board liaison at Calbright College. You can follow our meeting agenda on board docs. The link can be found on our website, which is calbright.org forward slash board. For attendees who wish to make public comment, please use the Q and A feature to address the board for up to three minutes. Public comments should be used to address today's agenda. A reminder that this board meeting is being recorded. Thank you.
Thanks, Terry. Can you please call the roll?
Hildegaard Aguinaldo.
Present.
Amy Costa.
Present.
Tom Epstein.
Here.
Jolena Grande.
Here.
Pamela Haynes.
Here.
Jennifer Perry.
Mostly here.
And Bill Rawlings.
Present.
We have a quorum. President Costa.
Well, I'm glad most of us are mostly here. Thank you, trustee Terry. Next, we have the discussion of the order of the agenda. Does anybody have any questions or requests on the order of the agenda?
You skipped the pledge of allegiance.
Oh, shoot. Yeah, that's your, your, your big, um, your big, your moment because I was going to ask for trustee Epstein to lead us in the pledge.
All right. Everybody ready? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. And I'll just go back to the order of the agenda. I didn't see that anybody had their hand raised. Okay, with that, we will go to the president's report and I will keep it very brief. I just wanted to note to my colleagues that I had privilege and the honor of speaking at the Calbright All Hands Meeting a couple of days ago for, for all the staff of Calbright. And it was really wonderful. And, you know, during that meeting, somebody had asked me kind of like, well, why do I do this? Why? Why am I on these boards? Why have I been involved in education and public policy? And it really just, you know, I reflected on that a lot. And, you know, my brother and I were the first in our family to go to college and it was transformational for both of us. And I think all of us in our lives can sort of recognize whether it's in our educational journey, our personal journey, our professional journey. Individuals really had a meaningful impact. And it is kind of those one-on-one interactions that sometimes put us on a completely different trajectory. And I know for me and my educational journey, there were people along the way that saw something I really did not see in myself. And that's the magic of Calbright. That's what we do every day. And so I just wanted to thank the staff across the organization for making that happen, whether or not they're directly interacting with our students or whether or not they're facilitating it. That's really where the magic happens. And none of us really knows in any of those individual interactions, the impact you can have on someone else. And so I'm just incredibly proud of the Calbright team. You know, I was there when it was a very nascent idea and to see how far we've come. Really based on everyone's hard work is just truly, truly inspirational. So, and I know I speak for all of my colleagues, but I just want to take this moment to thank everyone on the Calbright team for all of their hard work. This work is not easy, but it is incredibly meaningful and transformational. So thank you for your hard work. I really appreciate it. And I know that our students do, and ultimately the state of California will as well. Thank you so much. With that, I'm going to turn it over to our CEO for her report.
Thank you, President Costa, Vice President Hildegaard, Algunado, and members of the Calbright Board of Trustees Executive Committee. As we approach the end of 2022, I wanted to first share my gratitude for your leadership, your partnership over this past year. And as Amy already mentioned, really for the steadfast dedication for Calbright's faculty staff and the team at the college. Though we still have a few weeks left on our progress, or left out of this year, our progress this year has been exceptional. Enrollment has grown nearly one hundred and twenty percent in the past twelve months. We now stand at sixteen hundred thirty-four students. A little more than three years after opening our doors, you know, our student body is now comparable in size to several community colleges as well as far north as Siskiyou's and as south as Joshua Tree. And while we're pleased with our growth, we are keeping focus on the needs of our current and future students. So as we continue to build and evaluate, iterate and improve, that's what's at the center. We're fundamentally a different institution than we were six months ago, and we will again in six months. While this is evident in the development of our operations and the continued expansion of our organizational capacity, it extends through the student journey, what our students actually experience. In the entirety of the last fiscal year, we conferred sixty-five certificates and we are set to significantly outpace that progress, having recently awarded our sixty-three, sixty-third certificate only halfway through our current fiscal year. Doubling the number of certificates awarded is a clear indicator of progress, but when we dive deeper into the numbers, we see something even more compelling. We see that the students that are actually completing today are doing so at a faster pace than those who are among, were among the first to enroll at Calbright. We see the impact of our efforts to evolve, our instruction, our student support models, our outreach, they continue to reflect what we learn and what we learn about the needs of our students and are responsive to that. As an example, this past spring, we launched live information sessions for prospective students to learn more about Calbright and to really understand what they would be engaging in in competency-based education and the services we offer. To invite them really into that experience of what it can be like to be rooted for, to be supported as they seek to advance their skills and meet their goals. Now, more than two hundred interested learners have attended these sessions and what we find is that thirty-six percent of attendees have become Calbright students. This seems like the seemingly kind of simple act puts a face to the Calbright name and it really helps students identify the program that best fits their goals. It also preemptively answers questions they might have and empowers them to engage within the Calbright community. And while an information service session may serve as just an entry point, these proactive endeavors are evident across the student journey. This fall, our counseling faculty launched a new initiative to reach out to students who had had no activity in our learning systems for two or four weeks. In September, forty-two percent of students re-engaged after outreach. In October, that was fifty-two percent who re-engaged with similar outreach. And in November, despite the holidays, forty-five percent re-engaged. So as we move forward, our partnerships with Bitwise, UC Irvine, United Healthcare Workers, they're only going to amplify these effects. Supporting adult learners, you all know, is a shared challenge across the community colleges system. Collective completion rates are in the low single digits. And so Calbright's position as the leading edge of the learning curve is critical as the system continues to grapple with declining enrollment. Twenty twenty-two has taught us that the path forward has to look different than the traditional approach. Nearly nine of ten Calbright students cite our model specifically as the reason their program was accessible. They're telling us what they need so that we can grow the size of the pie instead of doubling down on the same population of learners. A more inclusive higher education system is one that requires that we actually listen, that we build with student needs at the center of everything that we design. And to push our operations to reflect the impossible question students often face. Do they take an extra shift or attend a class? Do they make it home to spend the evening with their family, or do they instead try to commute to campus? If twenty twenty-two was the year Calbright hit its growth curve, twenty twenty-three will be the year that our expanded capacity and vast learnings catalyze our development and propel us to the second half of our startup period. In the six months' time, we will be yet another iteration of Calbright, and I look forward to your partnership as we achieve these ambitious goals. Thank you to President Costa, and this concludes my remarks.
Thank you so much. Great remarks. Next, the board will be moving into closed session. We have two items on the closed session agenda. One is conference with labor negotiator, two, public employment, chief of program operations. Is there any public comment on the closed session items? Oh, hold on, I see a board member, Perry.
Sorry, I meant to raise my hand before. So this is probably, I'm not sure this is the right moment, Ajita, and thank you for that great report, but I'll hide behind my mostly here if I'm, if I'm out of order. So it occurred to me when you were talking, because we just did a big event this weekend with former foster youth, all of whom are enrolled in some kind of, you know, pursuing some kind of secondary higher education. Do we track foster youth that are enrolled at Calbright? Is that something we, we look for?
You know, I don't know offhand. We pull a ton of application data from CCC Apply and it's mostly been focused on the identified targeted populations or focus populations that are defined in statute. So we collect data on all of, all of that, but on the specific question on foster youth, I know to be on the application, the bigger application. Let's, we can take a look back and get back to you right away.
Yeah, no hurry. I just, it occurred to me since I was dealing with so many of those, and what, you know, it's sort of the perfect population. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks. Any public comment on either of the closed session items?
President Costa, there is no public comment.
Great. Well, we expect return from closed session in about thirty minutes. So with that, I'd ask my colleagues to join me in closed session and we'll reconvene when we're completed. Thanks. Good afternoon. We are back from closed session and the board did not take any action in closed session. With that, we are running a little bit over, so I'm going to ask all of our presenters to be crisp and concise. Um, next up, we have section three of the agenda, our consent agenda. Do any trustees wish to remove an item from the consent agenda for discussion or a separate vote? All right, I am not seeing any hands raised. Is there any public comment on our consent agenda?
There is no public comment.
Great. With that, I will entertain a motion in a second, colleagues.
I will move approval of the consent agenda.
I second Haynes. Okay, that's Grande with the motion and Haynes with the second. Can you please call the roll?
Hildegaard Aguinaldo.
Aye.
Amy Costa.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Jolena Grande.
Aye.
Pamela Haynes.
Aye.
Jennifer Perry. Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Motion carries President Costa.
Thanks, Terry. Next, we're on to our action part of the agenda and we'll start with item four point one, the Chief of Program Operations Memorandum of Understanding. I believe our CEO is presenting this item.
My apologies for the delay.
No worries.
Um, thank you. President Costa and Vice President Aguinaldo, members of the Board of Trustees. I am recommending for approval, action agenda item four point one. The approving, approving the memorandum of understanding between Calbright College and Marissa Bold for newly assigned duties and responsibilities carried out under the title of Head of Strategic Growth and Development through December fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. The major thing related to this item is that there are no monetary benefits or changes to the original employment agreement for the Chief of Program Officer approved by the board on December fifteenth, twenty twenty.
Great, thank you so much. Trustees, is there any discussion on this item? I'm not seeing any hands raised. Do we have any public comment on item four point one?
There is no public comment.
Thanks, Terry. With that, colleagues, I'll entertain a motion in a second. Haynes moves. We have Haynes.
Aguinaldo, I'll second.
Great. Haynes and Aguinaldo. With that, can you please call the roll, Terry?
Hildegaard Aguinaldo.
Aye.
Amy Costa.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Jolena Grande.
Aye.
Pamela Haynes.
Aye.
Jennifer Perry. And Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Motion carries President Costa.
Great, thanks, Terry. Next, on our action item, we have item four point two, the Licensed Vocational Nursing Program Course Outlines of Record for Four Courses, and we have Shannon McCarty presenting this item.
Yes, hello, President Costa, Vice President Aguinaldo, and members of the board. I'm here seeking board approval for the Licensed Vocational Nurse Curriculum. Cognizant that we've had several meetings between the original L V N program presentation by Michael Younger until now, I wanted to provide just a bit of historical perspective. So as I'm sure you are all aware, the state of California is making a substantial, excuse me, a substantial investment in healthcare occupations, and one of Governor Newsom's priorities is expanding the training pipeline for frontier healthcare workers. The need is especially acute in some of Calbright's focus reasons, like the inland empire and Central Valley. Works, we are excited to support these efforts by developing a Licensed Vocational Nursing Program in partnership with SEIU, United Healthcare Workers Labor Union, that pairs high-quality online learning with clinical opportunities and partnerships facilitated by U H W. Our proposed curriculum, which I'm seeking approval for today, is reflected in the four course outlines of record, also known as the C O Rs, included in this agenda item. It was developed in collaboration with a contractual registered nurse and nurse educator who ensured curriculum alignment with the Board of Vocational Nurse and Psychiatric Technicians Curriculum Expectations. The C O Rs have been reviewed by Calbright's Healthcare Advisory Council, who provided thoughtful feedback on the curriculum. Their suggestions were integrated into the C O Rs, which have now been reviewed and approved by our internal curriculum committee. So thank you for your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you so much for your presentation. I see Jolena, pardon me, trustee Grande has her hand raised.
Well, I thank you, President Costa, and thank you very much, Shannon, and everyone who worked to bring together these C O Rs for the L V N program. I just had one question, and this is more along the lines of articulating with our end programs in the future. Are we seeking accreditation for the L V N program so that students who complete the L V N would be eligible to transfer the coursework that they've completed at Calbright into credit-bearing coursework in a registered nursing program at one of our community colleges? And if so, what partnerships do we already have lined up for that type of articulation?
Yes, absolutely. We will be seeking those, and I will probably throw that over to, I'm not sure, if Ajita, you would be the appropriate person regarding any future partnerships.
Yeah, there's a step in order. I think there has been interest from some other community colleges around figuring out exactly how this program can fit into their needs with respect to their intentions on their program. And also because we anticipate this program will lead to a diversification of the pipeline into nursing additionally as well. So the articulation agreements will, will come later, but they are on the horizon line from a design perspective. The, the initial thing that is important for us, as you know, is we are in the process of candidacy to achieve initial accreditation as an institution. So we will reach step one. Interesting about the L V N program is that that program itself does not require accreditation for it to be viable in terms of the certificates that come out of this and eventually the eligibility to enter into the workforce. And so we're primarily focused in the first part of this program, especially as we're still in the candidacy process around accreditation to, to, to advance it in that way. Once we achieve institutional accreditation, it makes the articulation conversation a bit easier with institutions. We also will explore through the course of this how we can use our status as an accredited institution to also consider ways in which we can recognize the credit attained here and ascribe it to credit for prior learning opportunities. Those are, there are also a number of campuses that are also interested in that. So those discussions will happen. They are not, we're not in a position institutionally for them to, to advance quite yet.
Great, thank you. I'm, I'm just thrilled about this. I mean, I think we all know there's such a pronounced need in healthcare in general exacerbated by COVID, so this is just truly wonderful. Do we have any public comments on this item?
There are no public comments.
Thanks. With that, colleagues, I will entertain a motion in a second.
I'll move to approve.
I have Perry moving and Rawlings is the second. Terry, can you call the roll, please?
Hildegaard Aguinaldo.
Aye.
Amy Costa.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Jolena Grande.
Aye.
Pam Haynes.
Aye.
Jennifer Perry.
Aye.
Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Motion carries President Costa.
Thank you. Next up, we have item four point three, a contract amendment with Amicus Systems Incorporated, and this is being presented by Vivek.
President Costa, Vice President Aguinaldo, and members of the Board of Trustees. The engineering and product team's mission is to build and integrate technical systems to enable an engaging student journey and to meet our deliverables set forth in our strategic vision. We need to build our team capacity to design and implement the technical systems, which will meet our growing needs of student interaction and support. As we build out our core team, we will be in a better position to assess and evaluate future contracting and staffing needs or additional capacity we may need over time. I had come to the board on the fourteenth of November with a request for a contract amendment. We heard what you said, and we have taken steps in that direction. We completed a refresher training in purchasing and procurement, and I have already started work with our procurement coordinator towards an R F P for selecting service providers that we target to launch in the Q one of next calendar year. We continue to focus on hiring full-time employees to fill product in the different positions and are also reviewing our advertised job descriptions to find any opportunities to make updates that we think may attract a stronger candidate pool. To allow us to meet these aims and to allow us to maintain business continuity, I'm requesting one last amendment to an existing contract so that we have the support during the requested extension term while we make the hiring efforts to fill the roles with F T Es and work towards putting out that R F P in the Q one of twenty twenty-three. So to provide some background, on the Amicus System contract, we've had this in place since October twenty twenty-one through a master service agreement and subsequent amendments. We currently have a fully executed amendment in place in the amount of one hundred and twenty thousand dollars, which expires on December thirty-first. Through this contract, service provider, Ru Petranavish, has provided crucial development and technical support to the Calbright engineering team. Mr. Petranavish has played a key role in supporting D E A C reporting and development of program enhancement modules, sales force and S I S enhancements, as well as development services and addressing integration issues. So as, as we work towards filling this role with a full-stack developer, full-time employee, it is important that Mr. Petranavish's expertise and intimate knowledge of Calbright Technical System continues to be available to us during this requested extension period to provide us a business continuity and provide us an opportunity for knowledge transfer to a Calbright full-time employee. Specifically, this item seeks approval for an additional one hundred and twelve thousand dollars, bringing the total value of the agreement to four hundred and twenty thousand, four hundred and twenty thousand dollars through June thirtieth of twenty twenty-three.
Thank you. Colleagues, any trustee discussion on this item? Any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment at President Costa.
Thank you, colleagues. I will entertain a motion in a second. Haynes, second, Pam. I have Epstein with the motion and Haynes with the second. Terry, can you please call the roll?
Hildegaard Aguinaldo.
Aye.
Amy Costa.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Jolena Grande.
Aye.
Pamela Haynes.
Aye.
Jennifer Perry.
Aye.
And Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Motion carries President Costa.
Thank you. We have our last action item, item four point four, Approval of Additional Funds to the Student Assistance Program Services Agreement with New Directions Behavioral Health. Ted, I believe you're presenting on this.
Thank you, President Costa, Vice President Aguinaldo, and members of the Board of Trustees. Calbright has always known that providing some form of virtual healthcare services, also known as telehealth, would be essential to supporting our students and helping them focus on their academic and career journey. Beginning in November twenty nineteen, we've worked with New Directions Behavioral Health and their Well Connect Students Program to provide twenty-four seven access to support, like counseling, financial consultation and more. It's an important service that we want to continue providing. That said, since October of this year, we've been actively evaluating multiple services and have come to a decision to move to a new provider. New behavioral health requires ninety days notice of termination, which we have given. That said, to provide uninterrupted service and telehealth support to our students, we are seeking approval of additional funds for the Well Connect Agreement in the amount not to exceed of fifteen thousand dollars so that our students are supported in our transition to the new provider.
Great, thank you for your presentation. Trustees, any discussion on this item? I'll just say I agree with you that I think it's absolutely imperative that we offer our students these services, and so I'm looking forward to the next iteration of this. Any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment, President Costa.
All right, who's got the motion and the second?
I move approval.
I'll second.
Haynes and Rawlings. Can you call the roll, please, Terry?
Hildegaard Aguinaldo. Amy Costa.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Jolena Grande.
Aye.
Pamela Haynes.
Aye.
Jennifer Perry.
Aye.
And Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Motion carries President Costa.
Great, thank you, Terry. So now we're moving on to our information and reports, items of the agenda. We're going to start with item five point one, the first quarter fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three budget update, and we have Angelito presenting.
Yes, good afternoon, President Costa, Vice President Aguinaldo, and the members of the Board of Trustees. So we'll cover Q one, twenty twenty-three budget and current spend update. Next slide, please. And our agenda today, very quickly, is the Calbright overview, fiscal year and twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two actual updates. We'll then move into Q one, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three update. We'll also discuss our hiring of full-time employees as of the first quarter and then our next steps. Next slide, please. So Calbright College Fiscal Year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three annual budget represents the strategic vision goals for twenty twenty-three and are based on an explicit assumption of flat annual funding at fifteen million dollars and the carryover of one-time funds estimated at approximately seventy-one million dollars remaining as a carry forward from the previous year. The overall budget for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three sets ambitious goals to drive towards a new phase of high-quality growth. Calbright College has developed and already has begun implementing a robust implementation plan, starting from January twenty twenty-one through the end of December twenty twenty-five. Next slide, please. So here's our first year, I mean, I'm sorry, fiscal year and twenty twenty-two, year-end actual results. I'll just go through the major line items. As you can see, we have a bounce forward of, at the beginning of fiscal year twenty twenty-two of approximately eighty-three million, split up between unrestricted and restricted of six point five and seventy-seven million. Going down, we have a general apportionment of fifteen million. That shouldn't be a surprise to anyone. We have twenty-one thousand of interest income recorded under the unrestricted. For the restricted piece, we recognized eighty, eight hundred and ninety-two thousand of interest revenue and other revenue items, and that represents approximately two hundred and eighty-seven thousand of interest income. And we had a one-time grant of six hundred thousand from E C M C. E C M C grant, it's a technical assistance fellowship for the operator, operationalization business strategy. So that was a one-time grant that we received last fiscal year. Academic salaries in totality is about two, two point six million versus a budget of three point seven million or seventy-one percent of the twenty twenty-two budget. Non-academic salaries of approximately five point five million versus a budget of eleven point seven million or forty, forty-seven percent of the budget. Going down, benefits academic of approximately six hundred and sixty-nine thousand. It represents approximately a twenty-six percent of the academic salaries and benefits non-academic of two million represent approximately thirty-eight percent. And this disparity is primarily due to the difference Calsters and Calpers has And this disparity is primarily due to the difference Calsters and Calpers has different contribution limits, employee and employer portion. So that's why you see the ratios being a little off or not off, but they're not equal. Operating expenses, we incurred approximately seven point four million in the last fiscal year versus a budget of nineteen point one million or thirty-nine percent utilization rate. The major expenses last year were consulting contract services of about four point five million, marketing expenses of about eight hundred seventy-one thousand, legal expenses of about just over half a million dollars, and cellphone usage of about three hundred thousand. The next line item, capital outlay, as you can see, was about four hundred eighty-eight thousand versus a budget of seven million dollars. The four hundred eighty-eight thousand is primarily computer laptops and related equipment versus the seven million dollars in the budget which was budgeted for headquarters, office headquarters and regional offices. Next slide, please. Now, Q, Q one fiscal year twenty twenty-three unrestricted funds, and so just going down the revenue and expense items again, we have a, we have an annual budget of fifteen million. As of nine thirty, we recognize four point two million of that. And that's obviously just our general log man. We have interest below that. We have interest revenue about thirty-nine thousand. Academic, actual academic salaries on an, was approximately seven hundred and twelve thousand versus a academic salary budget of almost three point seven million. If you annualize the seven hundred and twelve thousand as of nine thirty, we're going to get to a roughly seventy-nine percent of the budget. And that's primarily, this disparity is primarily due to there are still a few faculty roles to be filled, which is why we're not going to achieve our overall spend on academic salaries. For non-academic salaries, we have about one point three million as of nine thirty versus a budget of eight point nine million. And that's really, if we annualize the one point two million that we incurred in the nine thirty first quarter, we will only have achieved about fifty-seven percent of our total non-academic budget. And that's due to the fact that there are still some significant roles which need to be filled by the balance of the year. Some of those significant roles include general counsel, a controller position, and several IT-related roles which have still to be filled yet. Next slide, please. So for the restricted funds, we have interest revenue of about two hundred fifteen thousand as of Q one. For non-academic salaries, we again are, haven't met our goals. We still have continued recruiting that we still need to occur for our non-academic roles. And scrolling a little bit further down, our operating expenses of about eight hundred twenty-five thousand pale in comparison to the budget that we have of seventeen million. And the budget for restricted funds, just as, as a, for your information, we have a significant portion of consultants budgeted at eight point six million for the fiscal year. Additionally, we have legal and related of four point six million and another four and a half million dollars in contracts. So that represents really the bulk of the operating expenses budget, just for everyone's. Remember, it's in regards to what made that operating expense budget line item for restricted funds so large. And then lastly, the capital outlay of seven million dollars that was budgeted, that's again for headquarters and related offices, a one-time expense. Next slide, please. So on a combined basis, there are a couple of quick takeaways that that I'd like to highlight. If, if Q one is any, is representative of our current spend for the balance of the year, then we will only have achieved approximately thirty, thirty-seven percent of our annual budget, assuming that we annualize our Q one spend, which I think is a little premature simply because with current strong hiring happening here in the second quarter, we are hopeful that we'll get closer to our fiscal goals in regards to our academic hiring and non-academic hiring. So we're remaining hopeful simply because we're, we're really on a strong projection in regards to what our hiring needs are and what we've been able to achieve. And additionally, Q one is, Q one results are very preliminary in regards to forecasting for the balance of the year. I believe that once we have the first half of the year actual results in place, we'll have a better idea of what to project out for the remaining six months of the fiscal year. So we, we should have a better idea once six-month results come in. Next slide, please. Now, here is a slide in regards to where our full-time employees are on a one-time basis and ongoing basis or unrestricted, I'm sorry, restricted versus unrestricted. So as of nine thirty, our Q one update, we have twenty-seven non-academic positions budgeted, of which seventeen are still vacant. So we still have quite a ways to go on the non-academic side. On the ongoing or unrestricted funds, we have twenty-six academic positions budgeted, of which nine are still vacant. Also, on the ongoing or unrestricted funds, we have seventy non-academic positions budgeted, of which thirty-two are still vacant. So we still have a ways to go in regards to some of our hiring objection, I mean, objectives. So current FTEs are sixty-nine as of nine thirty. And just to reiterate, the, the chart shows what we currently have actuals vacant and request positions, and we just have a total budgeted FTEs for the fiscal year of a hundred and twenty-three employees. Next slide, please. So next steps, staff has been, staff has submitted the year-end expenditure report to the Chancellor's Office. And currently, my department is working with Calbright Auditor, Auditors in regards to the fiscal twenty twenty-two audit and close. And the quarterly fiscal reports will continue to be presented to the board during the course of the fiscal year. So with that, I leave any questions for the board?
Thank you so much. I see trustee hands has, Haynes, pardon me, has her hand raised. Tom Twister. You're muted, Pam.
Thank you. This is actually maybe not a question for you, but the vacancies that we, we currently have and the goal to ramp up in this next year. A, a, a Gita.
How's that going to reconcile?
Yeah, how's that going to reconcile?
Because it's a great question.
Because these are sort of, the, they, they have to go hand in hand, but the, the hiring part is such a slow process.
Yes.
And, and then finding the right fit, it can be, I don't want to use the word challenging because that sounds negative, but we really do want to find the right fit. So, so what is the thinking around that piece of it?
Yes, so I think, you know, the budget defines what we need and a couple of things that'll help us on the hiring side of things from, in terms of operationalizing that aspect of getting to what we need has, has a lot to do with a couple of new positions also that we've put onto the HR team that the board has approved that have since started this fall. So there's greater bandwidth on the HR team itself, which we are very excited about because it helps us accelerate some of the processes around being able to conduct and execute multiple searches more simultaneously than we have previously had efficiency around. So there's, there's a lot of strengthening in the hiring practices themselves. That being said, you are absolutely correct. It is an extensive process and we are, we follow the letter of the rule on the process. And so, you know, we, we account and anticipate for the timeframes to hire to exist. How, and I think part of the challenge has been in the process of ensuring that we have robust applicant pools. And so, you know, you heard Vivek talk earlier about what we're doing to try to enhance the pool, for example, in terms of the technology hires that we're planning for. So in each of the divisions, I think there's a similar exercise of prioritizing and pushing for additional hiring to happen and then aligning the processes that have to come together within those divisions and across the college in order to make sure that we can operationally execute on those at a more rapid pace than we have been traditionally able to do. That being said, it is not entirely predictable in terms of who comes in the door and how quickly those processes can move forward. And so the, the result of that is we sometimes see a shift year to year from positions we know we need to hire and whether they land in this fiscal year or get pushed into the first quarter of the next fiscal year. And the thing that I'm excited about in terms of our position, in terms of the, the overall HR capacity that we have now is we do anticipate bringing a number of additional hires to the board, particularly in the first half of next year.
So I have a follow-up question, and it goes to Joe and your, in, in, in your team. And please correct me if I am making the wrong assumptions, but it seems to me that, how do I say this tactfully, that, that, I'm going to use run-of-the-mill, but that's unfair. It seems to me that there's, there, there needs to be or there, I'll just say needs to be some expertise on the, in the personnel office in terms of the expertise we're looking for relative to this institution. And when I say that, the sort of the expertise around the infrastructure relative to IT and all of those kinds of things. So, so and I could be wrong, so please clarify for me what, what that team that you're hiring or folks that you will be hiring, what that looks like relative to what the college needs?
So I'll jump in, Joe, maybe you want to add anything from your end. But the, the understanding of the expertise, that the sort of like what skills are needed in terms of creating and managing the activities of each division is really under the auspice of having strong and capable leaders that we have across these divisions. And so that initial identification and understanding and defining of the skills requirements that we need into the college really involves those individuals and then their partnership with Joe and his team. So the ability for them to identify those and the support that, that Joe's team gives folks in helping align that to processes, particularly those in the public sector. So I'll let Joe speak more to kind of the, the operation side of those things. But by and large, it's not, it's not expertise isolated around the technical skills that we need that, that sits in HR, but it is HR expertise.
Right, and I, and I think Ajeeda hit it right on the head. Really, there's, it's a partnership. So the HR team provides the level of guidance and expertise related to compliance, process, procedures, ensuring that we are doing equitable hiring processes, equitable, fair hiring practices. We rely heavily on the department managers or the people in charge of their divisions to provide the technical expertise about the type of candidate they need. So every time there's a new posting, the department leads are the people who review job descriptions and decide, okay, is this job description still aligned with what my needs are? We handle the process sides of those. When the hiring teams are put together, they're put together with a number of balancing factors, whether it is equity balances, gender balances, but also expertise balances. And so the hiring teams are then assembled by the HR team with support from the department leads. And those hiring teams then move forward. The HR expertise is on keeping the hiring process moving and making sure that all the steps are taken care of, that we're being compliant, how we're reviewing documents, how we're screening applicants, the type of questions we're asking applicants, all of those kind of things. But we're relying on the hiring teams, which are made up of the content area experts to make the true decisions around who are the right people to hire.
So again, another follow-up, and that is it seems like this coming year, there will be a heightened need to, to, a heightened need to facilitate and to expedite this process. Yet, which can you share what that might look like? From, from your end, rather than, just from your end, what is it that you need in order to be successful in, in making certain that that flow of, of potential hires happens?
Sure. So we're, we're, we're doing those things right now. We're in the process of doing a lot of internal alignment within our own teams to ensure that we have streamlined practices as much as we can, that we're looking at new and ways, different places to recruit. We, you know, are posting out to, we don't just post to Calbright, we post out to the world in many different areas. And we also look at finding expertise where expertise may be. So there, it's different recruiting processes potentially for different types of positions to ensure that we're always trying to find the highest quality candidate we can. When we bring those teams and then our team helps to just keep the hiring teams focused and, and doing their job and, and screening applicants. So the hiring teams are the ones that screen applicants, hold the interviews and make an ultimate recommendation. The HR teams guide that process to ensure that they stay on track and keep things moving. So I, I think on our end, we are, we were making those shifts. We brought on a couple of additional people in our team. We are focusing on trying to ensure that processes are as expedited and, and and oriented towards the needs of the organization as we can to ensure that we can make that happen. And it's going to continually evolve because no matter what we do, we can always do better. And we understand that, and we're going to live in that frame of growth that no matter where we're at, we can always enhance what we do and, and do better.
Thank you, and I'm sorry for hijacking the budget discussion, but I didn't want to.
Hey, you're, you're, you're using my normal role. It's great. Any other trustee comments or discussion on this item? Any public comment?
There is no public comment, President Costa.
Okay, then we are on item five point two, Reports on Contracts and Purchases. Angelito, you're up again.
Yes, thank you. So next slide, please, or actually, yes. Just to read the, the background, policy six three hundred, and I'm sorry, if we can go on to the next slide, please.
Angelito, we do not have that up for presentation. We, we normally do not present the, the report.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
So. I'm happy to step in, Ange, if it would be helpful at all here.
Um, yes, please.
Okay, so for the month of November twenty twenty-two, we have a total of seven contracts that were executed. And a total purchase summary for the month of November at ninety-nine thousand four hundred and fifteen dollars and fifty-seven cents.
Great, thank you. And we have the, the detail in our agenda packets. Trustees, any discussion or comments or questions on this item? Seeing none, any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment, President Costa.
Okay, I see that for our six point one, six point two, six point three, our constituency group reports, we have no reports for December. So no items in that section, which leaves us with our public forum. Are there any members of the public that wish to be heard?
There is no public comment, President Costa.
Thank you, Terry. So with that, the business of the Board of Trustees. Oh, wait, I see Pam, she's coming in.
I apologize for this. I'm doing what I don't want anybody else to do when I'm leading, so I apologize.
You are chair. At me, Pam.
There, there was, there is no place for board members to, if they have, have an issue or a question in the agenda. And maybe we should have something that says that. I have been thinking, and I think this might be you, Ted, that in this section six point one, I recognize that we don't have a, a student trustee per se, and that's fine, but it might be an opportunity, you and faculty and classified. I know that you have stories because I know Jita has stories about something that's happened with a student. And this might be an opportunity to sort of focus in on one of our students or some of the work that's happening around the student experience. As a report, just really a very quick synopsis. I see Ajeeda. I see Ajita kind of moving her mouth.
I, no, no, I just want to seek some additional clarification and find some avenues for us to, to sort of meet the, the desire. And so I do think we are trying to find more ways of highlighting some of the, the real humans at the college. And if you would, if you, if we could take that assignment onto ourselves and think about the best way that we might be able to allow for the board to hear, to hear some of, some of the, that work that's going on and some of the individuals that has evolved. We have started thinking about in the new year in particular, how to highlight and put more of a human face on, on, on what's happening, what's happening behind the scenes. And so I think we, we are cooking up a number of informational presentations that we hope to be able to bring to the board in the coming year that will highlight some aspects of this work to make it more visible and real for folks. So I know we're going to plan on doing things especially related to the student journey, related to our efforts to develop a more comprehensive project, product roadmap for how we are planning on, on really enhancing student experiences going forward. And we'll also have peppered in opportunities for folks to learn about new programs under development. So I, we absolutely can use the, the avenue of informational sessions to think about how best to, to really curate and present that to the board.
I appreciate that. And, and I would, what I'm, what I'm hoping that it will be a student voice. I, I get the other kinds of presentations. We get to hear the voices of, you know, faculty and our classified. Something that really sort of listen, listening to the student voice, doesn't have to be a complaint. It doesn't have to be any of those kinds of things. But I, for me, that's what's missing when we have our in presentations. Thank you. I appreciate it.
We, we, we listen to that voice a lot, so.
I know you do.
We can think about how to, how to, how to share that out.
All right, thank you.
May I add one quick thing? So our manager of student and alumni engagement and relations, Amnajara, has been working with a small group of students to finish off the bylaws and constitution, which is now done. She's working with Cindy, Cindy Smith at F three to ensure that it's all in alignment, and we should be having elections soon. And I believe that we could roll that into some student voice that's authentic as well.
I appreciate that. Thanks so much.
Awesome. That's great news. With that, I think trustee Haines had our public comment. I don't see any other public comments. So with that, the business of the Board of Trustees is now complete, and we can again, want to thank everyone for their participation. I especially want to thank the staff for facilitating these meetings and your presentations. We appreciate it so much. Happy holidays, everyone.
You too.
Holidays.
Happy holidays.
Bye.
Bye.